The Town of Berlin. Country charm at the center of Connecticut.
Okay, welcome everybody to Town Hall meeting. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America, and to your love which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Councilor Tamponelli?
Here.
Councilor Evans?
Here.
Mayor...
Here.
Councilor Luddy?
Here.
Councilor Tinessa?
Here.
Councilor Shep?
Here.
Councilor Wasson?
Here.
Mayor, you have them before.
All right, great, thank you. Audience of citizens, now is our time for the audience of citizens. If we have anyone that wishes to speak, yes sir, you can come up. That's the only hand I see right now.
John O'Brien, 12 Vineyard Drive. I see we have one of Berlin's finest, our volunteer fire department over here.
Hudson?
Recognize them right off. Okay, I'm up here tonight, I want to set the record straight. In the Berlin Citizen Thursday, March 9th, there was an article to the editor. It says, "What's Going On Farmington Avenue." And it states in here that Town of Berlin turned down Perkins Family Restaurant Chick-fil-A's, and I believe they had mentioned Starbucks Coffee. I'm not too familiar, I believe that was a few years back. If they did turn it down, that was a mistake, could have grew off of Starbucks. But anyway, Perkins Family Restaurant never approached Berlin. The other Chick-fil-A never approached the Town of Berlin. This is fake news. I see that we have the Berlin Citizen, Hartford Current, New Britain Herald here tonight. Maybe what you should do is start, if you're going to publicize something in newspaper, do your facts check. Make sure it's correct and everything. Berlin is open for business. We are business friendly. Our mayor, our town council are working very hard to bring businesses here to Berlin. We have our plan in zoning, working very hard. Helen Riggins, Chris Edge, working very hard to bring basically businesses into Berlin. I got something from Chris Edge there that's pretty interesting. Since 2015, and Chris can correct me if I'm wrong, over $10 million in taxes came into Berlin. I'm gonna have to, you know, check on that, but there's a lot of taxes that have been coming in. Also, there's 38 new businesses and/or businesses that were here expanded or relocated here in Berlin. 16 and 17, looks like two good years. 15 was another good year. So Berlin is starting to grow. But all I want is our media, no more fake news. Set the story straight. Berlin is open for business. Thank you.
All right, thank you. It is the audience of citizens. Anyone else wish to speak? Hearing none, I will close the audience of citizens. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, come on up, I'm sorry.
If it's okay.
Of course it's okay.
So, yeah, my name is Jake Fisher. I am 110 Elton Road, and I'm also on the Board of Education. And I was hoping to share a letter with you that was addressed to the town council.
Sure.
So, this is, the Board of Education was informed the town council would consider reduction of the Board of Education's budget of about $1.4 million. And it's going to take it cut to what was the proposed budget, which was a status quo budget, basically not adding anything or cutting anything. So what I would like to do is kind of share exactly what that would mean to the Board of Education. So...
I think, you're talking about our proposed budget that we proposed?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Recognizing it's not final, right?
Yes, yes.
Right.
The proposed budget.
Right, and recognizing that we gave a 1.7% increase. All right, okay. Yeah, that's fine, go ahead. I just want to make sure the facts are clear, that's all.
Sure. No, and...
You didn't cut anything yet.
No, and you're welcome to cut me off.
No, no, no. Go ahead.
No, no problem at all.
You got the floor.
So the proposed reduction is about $1.4 million from what we proposed.
Got you.
So, so you're correct. So just a good idea of what that would mean to the education in our town. We did ask the superintendent to compose a list of items that that would likely look like. That would include department heads at Berlin High School, leading to reduction of full-time teachers, department heads at the middle school, elementary grade level team leaders, K-12 coordinators on art, music, physical education, technology integration specialists, leading to additional loss of staff, consolidation of library media specialists, again, loss of staff, larger class sizes at the elementary school, leading to more teacher reductions, loss of exploratory programs in the middle school, loss of middle school interscholastic sports, freshman and junior varsity sports, and for those sports that remain, we'll be considering fees for participation in any of those sports or clubs, fewer student clubs and activities in the middle school and high school, fewer secretarial and custodial positions, elimination, actually let me pause here, elimination of an elementary school assistant principal and consideration of additional administrative positions. And we're going to have to look at whether or not this town could support the amount of schools that it does. So initiation of discussion, planning of closing, or reconfiguring existing elementary school. So obviously this is all preliminary, as you are absolutely correct. I just wanted to share with what this would likely mean to the education system. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Can I have just a question?
Sure, absolutely.
You mentioned that was addressed to the town council. Town council did not receive that. I think it only went to Chairman Evans on the budget, and I have copies for you right now. Okay, thank you. Okay, it was dropped off to my office this afternoon. All right, but I do have copies. I don't even know if Councilor Evans had had a chance to look at it. Okay, thank you.
I had, yeah.
We just got it, okay.
We can hand that out right now to you.
Okay, understand.
Appreciate you reading it to us. No, I'm glad, we didn't see it.
Very much appreciated.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks very much, thank you.
Yep, that's why I made copies.
Yes, absolutely.
That's definitely important.
No question about it. Any other hands? Seeing none, I will close the audience of citizens and move on to our meeting agenda. We'll start with our consent agenda. We've all, I know we've all read through it. If we are comfortable, we have a motion to...
Sure, I'll make a motion to accept the four items on the consent agenda as written and proposed in front of us.
Second on that?
Second.
Any discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, now we'll move on. We have two public hearings tonight. First public hearing held tonight on March 21st, 2017. I hereby convene the public hearing for the $1,000, $1,800,000 Police Radio Appropriation and Bond Ordinance. The ordinance, which is the subject of this public hearing, is available to the public and may be obtained at this meeting from the town clerk. First of all, I need a motion and a second to read the title of the following proposed ordinance and to waive the reading of the remainder of the ordinance incorporating its full text into the minutes of this meeting. Can I have a motion?
Motion is so moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carries. An ordinance appropriating $1,800,000 for police radio system improvements and authorizing the issue of $1,800,000 bonds of the town to meet said appropriation and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose. So this is a public hearing, so if anyone wishes to speak about this particular bond and ordinance, please feel free to speak up at this time. All right. Hearing no public comments, I will call the public hearing on the $1,800,000 Police Radio Bond Ordinance closed. And we will vote on that at our next meeting, in case someone would want to come in and comment in the meantime. Okay. We have a second ordinance tonight, a second public hearing. I hereby convene the public hearing for the $4 million Road Improvements Appropriation and Bond Ordinance. The ordinance, which is the subject of this public hearing, is available to the public and may be obtained at this meeting from the town clerk. Need a motion and a second to read the title of the following proposed ordinance and to waive the reading of the remainder of the ordinance incorporating its full text into the minutes of this meeting. Can I have a motion?
Motion so moved, Mayor.
Second?
I have a second on that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes, and the ordinance appropriating $4 million for the Town of Berlin Road Improvement Program 2017 and authorizing the issuance of $4 million bonds and bonds of the town to meet said appropriation and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose. Again, this is a public hearing on our road improvement appropriation. Any comments? Any public comments? Seeing none, hearing none, I will call the public hearing on the $4 million Road Improvement Bond Ordinance closed. Okay, thank you. All right, so with that in mind, we will move on to new business, topic number one.
Support, the first item for approval was support the planning efforts of the Central Connecticut Innovation Places Consortium to assist them with any legislative action, planning activities, and governance that may be required upon approval of the CCIIPC as an innovation place by the CT Next Advisory Boarding.
Chris Edge, I believe, is here to answer any questions. Okay, great. Yeah, you guys come up now before we take any action.
I think the one on the podium there. I think that's the one.
This one works?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Good evening, welcome. Would you like me to give you a little brief overview of what this is all about?
Sure. And introduce yourself.
Brief. My name is Tim Stewart. I'm president of Greater New Britain Chamber of Commerce, former mayor of New Britain, and actually the lead agency in this planning grant application. Let me thank you for allowing me to be here this evening. I'll just give you a quick overview of our efforts over the past year, which culminates in a grant submission for a full implementation grant that is due April 1st. We've already been through several of the other towns. New Britain and Berlin and Farmington are the impact area on a larger scale for this planning activity. One of the requirements for the grant is to get resolutions from the councils and the mayors supporting these efforts. We've already been through the Farmington piece. Mayor's already sent me a letter previously for our initial application, and then Berlin is our last stop here before we do the actual formal submission. The Innovation Places program is through CT Next, a subsidiary of Connecticut Innovations, and it's a grant program that seeks to create and support entrepreneurs and leaders in developing places that will attract the talent and people that high-growth enterprises need in our communities. Young people want to be in dense, vibrant, walkable places that have mixed uses and access to transportation. We applied last September, as I said, for a planning grant. We were awarded a $40,000 grant to put together this effort, due April 1st. The actual awards for this grant can be as much as $1 million per year for up to five years, so there's potential $5 million for our region in this effort. Our matching contributions through some of our anchor institutions have netted us another significant portion of dollars and commitments going forward should we be successful in this effort. There are already eight regions that are up for this award, and they're going to select at least four of them for that effort. There's already money that had been allocated at the state level for this, up to $20 million over a five-year period of time to make this happen. This was all conducted through a series of focus groups throughout the region where we had a lot of institutions. Chris Edge, your Economic Development Director, participated since its inception. Some of the anchor institutions include Eversource, our school systems, the colleges, the hospitals. So it's quite a large effort and an undertaking on our part. And one of the goals was to analyze our current conditions and our future conditions in the region, see what kind of projects and things we could promote that'll make our places better and innovative for people that want to come. You know, there's a new buzz out there, everybody wants to track millennials out there and to keep talking about this stuff, but you know, most of our kids actually get their educations and they go elsewhere. So this effort, I think, is more directed at finding what our current assets are within our communities, trying to build upon them, and then try to find projects that will support that effort throughout our regions. And I think one of the biggest things that we embraced on our planning team was that we need to connect to all these other communities as well, because what works in Stanford may very well work in New Britain, may very well work in Kensington, and may very well work in Farmington. So connecting all these efforts through a SharePoint access was what we put together as a part of this thing, has been very successful for us, and I think is going to be looked upon quite favorably. So it's quite an effort. Some of the projects, I'll give you kind of an example of some of the things we're looking at. Our impact area had to be clearly identified. One of the criticisms we got from our first review was that it was too large, those three towns are a much larger area, and you can't just do everything in all those three towns that you want to do. So we specifically pinpointed areas within the community, and specifically in Berlin, your Kensington Village concept and the development around that area, which would be kind of an interesting mixed-use kind of development with the connection to the transportation system, with a connection to the hub, to the BRT, which can take you anywhere you want to go from that point on. So, and in Farmington, we're looking at the Route 4 corridor where there's a significant amount of research and development going on there, and a lot of projects that are planned in the near future where we can support that effort to make it a more livable, walkable space for people to want to live. So there's a huge amount of investment in this region. You know, I didn't even really know, even being mayor for all those years, I'm like, oh, what's going on in our community? When you start doing this research and find out all the money that's being invested here, there's over $60 million in research and development going on just within this corridor. And it's largely because of institutions like Jackson Labs and UConn and CCSU, but there's a lot of young, talented people coming out of those efforts, and I think it's going to be part of our job to try to capture them and keep them in these regions to live and work and grow in our communities here. So it's quite an undertaking. Hopeful that you guys will support this thing. It'll be, our governance structure is one of the biggest pieces of this thing, with support from all these anchor institutions, and a steering committee that's largely made up of an existing structure we already have called the CCEDA, which Chris is a part of, and several institutions in this region are a part of. It's a Central Connecticut Economic Development Alliance, which is actually the economic development district designated by the state of Connecticut and EDA for this region. So we already have an existing structure in place to be able to funnel this money to projects on a project-by-project basis, and it'd be, the effort is really just to support efforts that are going on here and try to build upon them, and maybe bring some additional connectivity through, you know, some broadband accessibility and some high-speed data access for your businesses and for your schools and for the people that live in your community.
Yes.
How are you, Mayor?
Good, how are you?
Good. Just a couple of questions about that steering committee and how decisions are made if we do get a block grant. So I know you mentioned Chris Edge was part of the steering committee. Just in terms of how you decide who that money goes to, and we do represent Berlin, so I'm going to, you know...
Yep, absolutely.
How do we make sure that all the money doesn't go to New Britain or to Farmington?
It will not. I can tell you that the CCEDA is comprised of several towns, and some of the towns that aren't within this three-town region of this, what we're calling, it's a CCIIPC, Central Connecticut Innovation Places Consortium, of our three towns. But the CCEDA will be reconfigured to more represent these three communities, and the steering committee will be comprised of the stakeholders within the community. So it'll be the towns, there'll be equal representation as far as everything goes, no weighted decision-making process, nothing along those lines. This is intended to leverage these funds against other funds that you may be seeking for upgrades to your police station, upgrades to whatever you're trying to do. So it'll be, the actual group itself is, will probably be somewhere around nine people or so. We're thinking three folks from each community, it'd be a town representative, an anchor institution representative, and then somebody from the business community doing that. So generally, we've had the EDCs from the three communities be a part of, they're a part of that group anyways.
I think it's a fantastic idea, and regionalism is certainly something that is...
It's a topic of discussion.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds great, Tim. What's the timeframe on this?
Um, timeframe is...
So we have some competition, obviously.
We do. There's, from the feedback we're getting already from folks that are applying for this thing, there is, we're actually in a fairly decent position because of our original submission, but you know, the key is making sure that we hit all the key points that we received from the technical review, and I have a timeframe here somewhere, and I'll try to find it. We're looking at submission in April. I believe the awards will come out in June. So it'll be like a two-month period of review for them, and they will make the awards in June, and we'll start to probably draw funds in the fall of next year. So we've identified like five, six projects already that we think are doable. Some are really not that expensive, you know, modifying zoning regulations to allow for, and some of it's already been done. I mean, some of your, I think some of your Kensington Village zoning stuff has already been accomplished. We've done a bunch of stuff in New Britain around the TOD zones, and I know Rose has done a significant bunch of work on the zoning piece on Route 4 and some of the development around there. So those things are really not that costly to do, it's really just having somebody shepherd the effort through each community and making sure that we have a commonality amongst us. Other things we've talked about in these groups are things like, you know, the coordination of development initiatives throughout our communities. You know, we really don't talk, there's walls between our communities a lot of times, and we find that zoning regs and a lot of our local ordinances differ greatly from town to town. So making development, especially when developers come into the region, not just your town, but in the region, and say they're looking for a parcel of land, we don't tell them that, well, you have to be in Cromwell, or you have to be in Rocky Hill. You know, we say, well, what are you looking for? We'll see what we can find within the region. So it doesn't really, it kind of breaks down the walls a little bit. So those kinds of things are efforts that we're going to undertake there. And another thing, and I know Chris has been talking with folks about manufacturing academies and career-to-cradle pathways for kids. We already have a few of those within New Britain. Farmington has them as well because of Jackson Labs. Well, those things need to translate across our boundaries, because why should they be getting all the benefit of the research and the data and the institution over there when it can, very easily through a smart center or smart classroom, we can do that across our boundaries through all three of our schools. It'd be very easy to do. So those are the kinds of initiatives we're looking at. They're a little different, but I think definitely doable.
Great, thanks. Any other comments, questions?
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Tim. Have a motion on this?
Okay. Move to support the planning efforts of the CCIIPC assisting with any legislative action, planning activities, or governance that may be required upon approval of the CCIIPC as an innovation place by the Connecticut Next Advisory Board.
Okay. Second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? So moved? Thank you, everybody. Thanks, Tim, Chris.
Okay.
Item number two.
The Parents Organization at the Richard D. Hubbard School is requesting a donation of a round of golf for four and two carts to be used as a raffle prize at their Bunny Bash to be held Friday, March 31st, 2017. The money raised during their raffle will be used to fund field trip transportation, curriculum enrichment, technology, and many other family events held throughout the school year. The Park, the Berlin Parks Recreation Commission has approved the donation at their March 16th meeting.
Okay, great. Motion on this?
Move to approve a donation of a round of golf for four and two carts at Timberland Golf Course to be used as a raffle prize for the Parents Organization at Hubbard Elementary School. The Bunny Bash to be held on Friday, March 31st, 2017, a total donation of $226.
Okay, great. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, discussion, yeah.
And both Jonathan and Lynn are here, so I'm not sure who can answer it, but I know in the past, and you guys are probably sick of hearing this, we had talked about like setting aside a certain number of rounds, a certain number of carts for the year for donations such as this and anything above and beyond that. And I was not at the budget hearing for the golf section, so I don't know if that was determined for the upcoming year, or if we're keeping track of that this year. The answer is no, that's fine.
We are, we are... We are tracking the donations that are given out, and also it was not discussed at this year as budget hearings to have a line item in the golf course budget for donations.
Okay.
So, but we do track, and the Park and Rec has been very diligent on reviewing the donations, making sure it's either an in-town organization or they're playing a tournament at Timberland in order to bring the donation to the council.
And I'm not at all opposed to the donations. I know it was something we were just thinking about looking at to see kind of year over year where we are in terms of how much. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Thanks. Okay, do we have a motion on the floor?
Mayor, just...
Oh, yes, one more time.
Just one comment. So in the revenue projections, the golf course is projecting revenues of $325,000 on golf cart revenue versus last year's of $291,000. So anticipate that that should be made up for with additional cart revenues from the indications I got from their revenue projections.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Okay, any other comments on that? Motion on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? So moved?
Okay. Item number three. Connecticut Sports Management Group is requesting approval for waiving estimated field usage fees not to exceed the amount of $10,495 for the 2017 Nutmeg State Games to be held at Sage Park from July 15th through August 6th, 2017. They approved, the Park and Rec Department approved this request at their February 16th, 2017 meeting.
A motion on this?
Move to approve waiving estimated field usage fees not to exceed the amount of $10,495 for the 2017 Nutmeg Games to be held at Sage Park from July 15th to August 6th, 2017.
A second for discussion?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Do you have any... Did you say something else?
Well, no, Steve Wood is here, if you have any questions.
Okay. Any questions?
I can...
Oh, sure. Sure, yeah, absolutely. Come on up, yeah, absolutely. Love to have you.
My name is Patrick Fisher. I'm the Executive Director of the Connecticut Sports Management Group, and I would first thank the council for your past support. We've had an outstanding working relationship with the Town of Berlin since 2010. The Nutmeg State Games are hosted by the city of New Britain. We expect about 7,500 athletes this year. There's unfortunately no city that can host everything that we do. Small examples, last year we scheduled 639 team sport games in 19 days, and then 11 individual sport competitions on top of that. So we used about 34 different facilities. So we spill into a few towns. Berlin obviously being the major supporter of the supporting towns. The last time we had an economic impact study done was when we were in Danbury, our last stop, and for the region, they estimated the impact at about $1.5 million. I took the liberty of just looking at a few towns just from our softball tournament that participated last year, if you don't mind, just bear with me. Darien, East Green Bush, New York, East Lime, Guilford, New Haven, North Franklin, Somerset, Mass, Stamford, Stratford, Terryville, Wallingford, Waterbury. 95% of the audience that participates in these events are not from this area, so the economic impact is significant. What we're asking you to consider is to waive the rental fee. What we cover is all the cost for staff, any equipment, and the lights. Going back to 2010, when we were first here, everything was waived. And each year, the town councils come and ask us to do a little bit more, a little bit more, and we're obliged to do so. The one thing that we can afford to do just because of the nominal fee it is to participate is incorporate a fee of $10,000 into our budget. We just don't have it. So our ask again is for the council to consider waiving those rental fees. And if that $10,000 figure, we usually only use about 55 to 60% of that. So it's an estimate based on if we filled every age division with the maximum number of teams.
Okay. Okay, great. Yeah, sure.
I don't know in the past if there was an opportunity for some of our either local sporting... sporting, um, you know, leagues or school organizations to sell concessions? Or do you guys do that?
We do sell the concessions.
You do? Okay.
Yeah, we do count on a little of that money. We have worked in the past with Kathy Scalise and then I believe another, um, program. The issue that we've run into, um, is concessions is a tough thing to do, you know, because you're getting volunteers and they always had an issue getting enough people. And then what you make on the back end of that for the time that you contributed is not that much.
Yeah, absolutely. And it's kind of in the middle of summer when everybody's gone and nothing else is going on. So, okay.
Correct. The other thing I would like to mention too is, uh, we have worked closely, um, with the Best Western Plus. It's really our primary hotel. I work with Liz Bell Rivera, I believe her name is, who's the sales. So we use, we have room blocks set up already for all the events. We do run some other events in Berlin throughout the year, through other events, the Connecticut Master Games, and we don't ask for a fee waiver, um, but we still use those hotels. Um, I've worked closely for the last year and a half with Chris, uh, the Economic Development Director. We've created kind of a map of all the restaurants that people can access when they leave Sage Park. Um, we're hoping to get something online this year through a website, um, and then be able to get that to our participants before and during the event.
Great.
Good idea.
Yeah, that's great. Appreciate all the work you've done.
Absolutely.
Happy to have you back. Happy to have you back. Chris, anything, anybody, we're good? We're good? We're good. All right, thank you. Any other questions? No. Hearing none. Glad you're here. Um, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Agenda item four is a follow-up. Berlin Park and Rec recommends the approval of Connecticut Sports Management Group to sell food items, beverages, and merchandise at the Connecticut Masters Games, March 3rd, excuse me, May 13th, June 3rd, and June 4th, and the Nutmeg State Games, July 15th to August 6th at the Sage Park concession.
Okay. Take a motion on this?
Sure. Move to approve the Connecticut Sports Management Group to sell food items, beverages, and merchandise at the Connecticut Master Games on May 13th, June 3rd, and June 4th, and the Nutmeg State Games, July 15th to August 6th, 2017, at Sage Park concession.
Great. Second on that?
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you.
Agenda item five. Uh, the garage requests approval of a bid waiver so that the fabrication projects can be completed by Pryor Brothers for an additional $6,500 as it is in the town's best interest. And Jim Simon's here to answer any questions.
Okay, great. Um, take a motion?
Move to approve the bid waiver so that our fabrication projects can be completed by Pryor Brothers for an additional $6,500 as this is in the best interest of the town.
Second on that?
Second.
Uh, discussion? Questions? Jim, just for one second, maybe just give us a minute, that's all. Real easy for you. You've kind of told us, I think, some of this before anyway, but.
So with, with the mechanic being out, we had to relook at the way we did things. So when we relooked at the way we did things, some of the things we did was, uh, send out work, our bigger projects, our fabrication projects and some of the other bigger projects. Um, and actually we used Pryor Brothers fabrication and we're at that $10,000 mark and we're going to be going over that. And so I'm looking for that additional funding to rebuild another truck. We have rebuilt three trucks down there this year already. Um, and that, that includes their four-season, which means their sidewinder trucks. We remove the bodies from them. They go out sandblasted, um, get recoated, welded all the rust up and then reassembled. And that's what we're utilizing them for. We utilize, you know, there's, there's a couple fabrication shops in town, um, and we utilize a mixture of them. We utilize Pryor Brothers probably more than the other ones, or not probably, we do. And we do that because he's the one that drops everything when we bring something in for us. He's the one that we can call at four o'clock in the morning and say, I got a plow down and I don't have anybody to fix it. And he opens right up. And that type of service, um, is what we're looking for.
Great. That's good to hear. Thanks for keeping our trucks on the road. I know it's difficult.
At times. This last storm was difficult.
Uh, I bet it was. I bet it was, yeah. Saw them on the streets several times. They were, did a good job, but it was a tough storm. Yeah. Yes, sir.
Just note, uh, and thanks, Jim, for using, uh, local company from local boys. I watched these guys grow up and they're very good at it.
Yeah, they are, they are very, very talented.
That's great. Uh, any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Uh, thank you, Jim. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved. Yes, you might as well stay. Yes, you're next up.
Item number six. Purchase the SCBA from shipment's fire equipment for the reasons the committee and the board of, uh, fire chiefs provided. They recommend the purchase of firefighter self-contained breathing apparatus and related accessories to be awarded to shipment's fire equipment sold and serviced through shipment's fire equipment in Waterford, Connecticut for the amount not to exceed $500,000.
Okay, we'll just, uh, do a motion.
Sure. Maybe we'll repeat that. Move to purchase the SCBA from shipment's fire equipment for the reasons the committee and the board of fire chiefs provided. They recommended the purchase of the firefighter SCBA equipment and related accessories be awarded to shipment's fire equipment sold and serviced through shipment's fire equipment in Waterford, Connecticut for an amount not to exceed $500,000.
Second?
Second.
So you have a lengthy agenda item in front of you, um, a few pages long.
Yeah.
Yep.
It all goes back to when we first met at the library, uh, quite, quite a while ago, over a year ago. Um, and we said that our SCBA was going to begin to come up on its due dates for, actually it would be the end of this year. And we needed to put the funding in place and we needed to get a committee to go and start our review. So the committee was put together. The committee began with reevaluating our operations and our equipments that were currently taken care of, um, or housing. And they downgraded that considerably, which saved us a bunch of money. Um, then they worked on a set of specifications that went out to bid. Um, and prior to going out to bid, they brought in a few vendors. One vendor did not, uh, participate at that point, but MSA and Scott did participate. They supplied us SCBA for evaluation. Um, a set of specifications was created, a set of specification went out to bid. Um, and a new player came in, uh, Drager Corporation. So when they came in, um, the committee went back and sat down and reviewed everything, brought in the vendors again and did another evaluation. It included Drager, so it would be apples to apples basically across the board. And after that review, the committee sat down and they came up with a recommendation that board of fire chiefs said that, um, that the higher priced Scott would be the one to be awarded. And there's numerous reasons that are outlined in there why we were going with the higher one. Um, and I have the co-chairman, Chief Lewandowski, who sat on the committee, uh, for questions on the evaluations. Uh, and I guess that about covers it.
Okay, great. Um, yeah, no, we've, I know we've talked about this a lot over the last year or so and you guys, uh, you in particular, but your whole team, the whole fire department always come in with a very thorough job and we appreciate that. And you give us a lot of information, maybe more than we need, but no, we like, we like all the information. It's great. We appreciate it. Um, so any questions? Do we have a motion on the floor? But any discussion? Any questions?
I have a question. The, uh, valuation or the bid summary talks about, uh, and it highlights it in green, an alternative price. Could you help explain?
The alternative price, we actually went off the, when we did the pricing of the air packs, we went off the original bid. But in renegotiate, or not renegotiate, but reevaluating the air packs, Scott came in with a wireframe air pack that had a couple features that were different from what we specked in our bid. And they were, um, detachable regulator and a buddy breathing system. So those two actually took off about $900. And when the committee reevaluated that and did some research further on that, they felt that, that that would be the air pack that we purchased and that that air pack was less expensive than what was spent. So that's where your lower, lesser price came in.
And were the other competitors in this, uh, have a similar offering or an equivalent offering and were approached also?
Mark? I'm going to say yes or no, but Mark?
Yeah, as Chief Simon said, it's, it's partially yes, partially no. Uh, one vendor does not offer it on their, um, unit. So the regulator was always fixed to the, uh, supply hose. Um, so originally when the committee started out, as the chief said, we started to, um, keep everything as equal as possible. But in the end, um, from the committee standpoint, the Scott is going to be the simplest air pack for us to use, the easiest to maintain. Um, and realistically, um, some of the competitors had more bells and whistles on there, but the feeling was we want an air pack for us to breathe off of. Um, so we tried to get the, uh, best pack that would fit that need for us. Um, while some other ones had some great technology in the, in some of the regulators we looked at, those are going to break down. We're going to have some maintenance issues with those down the road, even though everybody says that, you know, they won't. But the reality is, um, for us, technology at times is great and we come in and we, and you know, we ask for that. But with this, we want to go back to the simplest, easiest breathing machine that we can utilize. So Councilor Evans, to answer your question, um, when we put everything out there, the final package submitted by the fire administrator, uh, all those were considered, those options, we did speak with the vendors about that. So, um, those prices reflect apples to apples as close as we can get across the board from different manufacturers. So I hope that answers your question.
Mostly. When you've indicated yes and no, you have MSA and Drager as the, the others, did neither of them had an equivalent to the Scott, is what you're saying?
Not equivalent, but they did not have, for example, the ability to put a, uh, Scott originally had a detachable regulator, which we did with our last air packs. We found over a period of time that really wasn't a true benefit to us paying for that option. So, um, we were able to take that out and drop that price down. Um, as far as some of the other functions on there, for example, both Drager and Scott had technologically, uh, I won't say advanced, but, um, digital display regulators and, um, they were able to show our breathing rates and things like that. So there's an associated cost with that where the Scott did not. Scott was, you know, you look at the gauge, it says you have three quarters of a tank of air left. Every firefighter sitting in this room knows what that means to each individual. I breathe differently than Richie does or than Chief Simons does. So I know what my air consumption is. And at the end of the day, when the bell starts going off or the, or the vibra alert starts going off, it's time for us to leave. Some of those other ones would be able to tell you, you have 15 more minutes left at the rate you're breathing. Well, let me tell you, if something goes wrong, that 15 minutes becomes seven minutes. So the time just differs. So
So what you're saying is they don't, MSA and Drager does not have those regulators that would be equivalent to?
Yeah, some of it's different. And again, it's just through the manufacturer lines, just like anything else. So again, the answer is yes to no. But when we tried presenting the package to you, uh, we tried to put everything equal across the board as best we could. So we did go back to those manufacturers, say if we took this off, what is the reduction or what is the charge if there was one for that? So, um, that's how we came to our conclusion of, um, the Scott air pack.
Okay. And so in, in looking at it, it looks as though the best evaluated, no, the lowest evaluated price is Scott. So from, from what the spreadsheet looks like.
Right. And I, and again, I'm going to go back to, we decide, we as the committee, um, looked at everything. We had our members, uh, involved in this too. So it just wasn't the board of fire chiefs doing this. This went down to the rank and file because if you look at anything that we do, beyond our people, this is probably about the most important machine that we have to protect us. And if you look at what's happening at the state level, um, you know, the cancer presumptive laws and everything, this is protecting us from that. Our respiratory system takes in so much, you know, takes a beating out there. So again, um, we wanted an air pack, not something that had a built-in thermal imaging camera. We already have those. Would it be nice? Yes. Would it be used? Probably not. So again, more cost, that breaks. Now you're having the air pack go off for something that's not even related to the breathing on that. So, um, again, Scott did come out and make an air pack, being an air pack that we've been used to for the last, you know, 35, 40 years in the fire service. And just the other piece of that, for example, Drager Corporation, um, they invented the breathing apparatus. It was more of a European design. But if you look at their market share in the state of Connecticut, they have one department and of all, it's a volunteer department. It is nowhere as busy as our departments are in this community and it's a big risk to look at something like that. MSA, I can't, I can't say it's a bad device. But again, the fact is that there's a lot of technology built into that that we feel that we don't need and that would lead to problems down the road for us. And again, I, I know you're, you know, you're thinking, you look at cost of ownership. We know with the Scots, there's very little maintenance that, um, we're able to, um, have to be done on there. And we also have our people in our departments that will be trained to do, uh, some basic field service repairs as they are now. So they're comfortable with working with that. And again, less moving parts makes it a lot better for us.
Thank you.
Okay. Sometimes simple is better, huh?
In this case, in this case, I believe, and I support technology, but I believe in this case, as well as the rest of the committee did, that this is the way to go for us.
Good. Great. Yes, sir.
When it comes to something like this, I think, we'll take your word for it. I don't, uh, believe we have any expertise in the area up here. And, uh, and I agree, it's probably the most important piece of equipment you're going to have.
Yeah, Mayor, I just say, I, a lot of times folks complain us for, complain certain, uh, professional organizations for going for the lowest price. This one turns out to actually have the, the lowest price and is the best choice. So it's a home run in that sense.
Great. Okay. Uh, we have a motion on the floor. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Breathe, breathe safe. Be safe out there.
Agenda item number seven. Um, the council needs to set the question for the budget referendum to be held on April 25th, 2017. Appetite ballots will be available at the town clerk's office starting April 4th, 2017. Legal notice is given 30 days prior to the referendum. Um, and also the town council should vote to allow any person who is a citizen of the United States of the age of 18 years old and who is liable, who is liable to the town for taxes assessed against his or her, uh, on the assessment of not less than $1,000 on the last completed grant list of such town to vote the budget referendum on April 26th.
It's be April 25th, 2017. Uh, you have a corrected agenda?
Oh, yeah, that's right, yeah.
In front of you?
Yeah.
Always have the up-to-date figures from the finance department. So Brendan, when you read the motions, read from the corrected one, okay?
The highlighted one, this one.
It was correct, um, the date for the public, um, the referendum was corrected, the motion but not the body.
So before we do the motions, if we, we want to have any discussion, um, I know we've discussed the budget, uh, at length over the last few weeks and we, we will have a, a couple more bites at the apple. Obviously, this is a proposed budget based upon our last few weeks' discussions. We have a, um, we always find it obviously very important, which is why we'll have our public hearing, uh, on March 28th, which is our official public hearing. But this year, in light of some of the difficult, uh, budget issues that we're facing in our town and in our state, uh, I thought we would give the public maybe a second bite at the apple tomorrow night. We have a, we have a public hearing scheduled, uh, at seven o'clock, actually in the Board of Ed, um, uh, meeting room. If, uh, anybody wants to come and talk about the budget, ask us questions, tell us whatever they want to tell us. We certainly are very, uh, hungry for the input. We, we want, we want to hear from everyone in town. Um, and, uh, you know, we certainly have some more time before this is a final figure. And then, of course, we have our public hearing, uh, on March 28th, which we will have, take more input and then go back and do some more deliberations. So we still have some time. Um, so this is what we came up with at this point, but
Can I just ask a procedural question?
Yeah, sure.
Because I don't know why it, why do we normally do this before the town hearing? I don't understand why we're setting a budget amount if the potential is there to change. It just, and maybe this, I don't know, it just feels different to me this year to be doing this, setting the question, setting the dollar amount. Don't, do we always set the dollar amount in this?
Well, this is the amount that's going to go to your public hearing. Okay? It's not set as far as what's going to be the final one on the ballot.
It's just the question on the ballot, shall it be adopted?
Right. We've never incorporated the amount in our, um, in our question. And one of the reasons why is because, um, we don't really have a town meeting for a government where a lot of times these, if you had a town meeting for a government, the referendum would normally take place less than 19 days' notice. We have it set, we have to, because of that, um, do our legal notice 30 days before the election or before the referendum.
Okay.
All right. Um, the big thing where the town meetings sometimes are a problem is that if you have less than 21 days' notice, you can't send out absentee if you have less than 21 days' notice, you can't send out absentee ballots. The people have to come into the office and pick them up. So we've always pushed for the 30 days' notice, so that we can mail the absentee ballots out 21 days before, and not have the people have to come in to pick them up in the office.
Yeah, okay.
Okay? All right. Jeff, you have anything else?
No, that's right. I agree.
We started a little bit early the last couple minutes. We have more time, right?
The public hearing has been earlier this year and last year, I believe. So sometimes you don't have all these on the same agenda, and that might be what is kind of like, you're kind of going, wait a minute, how come everything's gone?
It makes sense that we're not putting this dollar amount in the question, which we've always done. I just...
I think this agenda item is combined now.
Yeah, okay.
Rather than two items being split out.
Yes?
Would it be possible to separate the vote on the two budgets, since one's an enterprise fund and one's tax dollars?
Yeah, I don't see why not. Right, or what do you think?
The, the...
I don't know.
The Water Control Commission does not go on the budget, I mean, does not go on the referendum, excuse me. It is only being sent for the public hearing. So both the combination of the town and Board of Ed budget is going for a public hearing, and the water control is going for public hearing. The Water Control Commission budget is not placed on the agenda, because it doesn't affect the entire town. It doesn't, it's not put on its question on the referendum. So because the water control only is part of the town, the entire town cannot vote on the budget.
So why are we sending it to that hearing?
If somebody really wants to say something about it at the hearing, that's their only opportunity. They don't get to vote on it.
Yes?
I think the question, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Panes, is, he's just asking if, if there's any issue with separating out the two questions. There, you'd both be sending them, or moving them, to send them to the public hearing, I guess.
You want a separate vote to send the budget to public hearing, and a separate vote to send water control to public hearing?
That's, and I don't want to...
Sure, I'm sorry, I misunderstood it.
I think that's what...
I apologize, I misunderstood. But there won't be two questions on the referendum ballot?
No, no, but tonight.
All right, sure.
Moving forward.
I apologize, yes. Thank you.
Okay. We have some other motions down here. I don't know if we have any other questions on any of this, or we have...
Can we discuss each of them as we...
Yeah, we can do that. We can do that. So let's make, so we're going to separate...
So Mayor, I'd move to amend the motions before, such that we would separate the motion to send the town budget to the annual public hearing, to be separate from the Water Control Commission budget, to be sent to the annual public hearing.
Okay.
I would suggest that you kind of follow what is said here, and just leave out the Water Control Commission budget. So move to send the FY 2017-18 town budget of, to the annual public hearing. Incorporate the amount, please.
Okay. So let me just ask to the, to my motion, you are suggesting a correction to my motion?
I'm asking that you rephrase the motion to include the amount in the budget. But that's a friendly ask, if you don't have to, if you don't want to.
Okay. I, semantics, I think we're, I was just trying to separate the two.
Okay.
Wait, do you want a motion to separate the two? I think that's what we're asking.
No, you don't need a motion to separate the two.
Oh, we just vote on separate.
You just need to put the motion on the floor.
Gotcha. Okay, okay. So first motion is...
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Sure. Move to send the fiscal year 2017-2018 town budget of $85,381,005.87 to the annual public hearings.
Okay, a second on that?
Second.
Discussion on this?
So I, I just, I, I will vote to move this forward to the public hearing, because I think that is democratic process, and it should go to the people, so they can hear how it was developed, why, why the Budget Committee felt that that was the right or wrong number. I will state, though, for the record, that I'm concerned with some of the Board of Ed concerns. I'd like to talk to the Board of Ed, having just seen them today, get a little bit more information behind that, before I can actually support that number. So I am voting to move it to the public hearing, not necessarily the, the budget amount.
I'm going to echo what Rachel said, and, you know, I appreciate the list that the Board of Ed has given us. These are, these are some very, very concerning things here. And we need to take this very seriously. So I'm going to vote to move this forward to the people, because I want to hear what the people have to say about this. But this is, this is a big deal.
Yes?
Yeah, I also are going to support the, the motion to send it to public hearing. Only makes sense, that we want our people to know what we're doing.
Of course. So... That's what the public hearing's all about, right?
That's right.
Coming up, yeah, right, exactly. Okay, yeah, no, I mean, I, yeah, I mean, I echo that too. We're just sending it, we know, we've got two public hearings. I added an additional one, just so we have people, a second bite at the apple. For some reason, they can't make the 28th, or they want to talk to us twice, or anyone from the Board of Ed.
Can I just ask a procedural question?
Yes.
Are we, after the first public hearing tomorrow night, we're not voting to change anything?
No, 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 no.
We're just, just listening.
Yeah.
And then after the second one is when we will vote. Okay.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, I just really was looking at it as another forum for perhaps some input, which we all want from our public. So, so, yes, anything on this side?
Yeah, Mayor, just, just a quick, for the, those that took up the invitation to come to our budget sessions, I think there were a few in the beginning, and hopefully they have interest on being on a particular board coming up in the future. Just to highlight, you know, the approach that I took, Mayor, as Chair, was to make sure that we understood the impact on any, any particular changes to, quite frankly, for the department heads, and actually gave a forum for department heads to indicate anything that the town manager took out, that they wanted back in. I didn't, gave them a lot of latitude this year, and potentially last. But this year particularly, because I wanted to hear from them, because of the significant challenges before us, and also invited that they would indicate any efficiencies. And I think we learned, gained some great insight into efficiencies into their operations this year, which I appreciated. And then lastly, if they needed to take some amounts out, and many were challenged to a significant percentage, just because we were facing, from the initial indications from the governor, some significant amounts. But they all rose to the occasion, which I just wanted to thank publicly, all the department heads that, that did that. We met, you know, and we have two elected bodies that come and talk to us during that, the Police Commission, as well as the Board of Education. And they too came forward, and the timing, you know, I had some discussions with the Board of Ed Resource Committee Chair, and also with the Board of Education President, and specifically at the meeting, and much of the same questions that were posed to the department heads, that they, that they might consider those three areas also. And, you know, Mr. Tennesse's letter to me, which has been shared with, with all of you, the only other ask, and it was when we first met with him in the budget session, was to put some numbers associated with each of that. And I've gone back and asked him that specific question, if those bulleted items could have some, some numbers associated with them. And that certainly was a challenge, finding the, the amount that would, you know, still give them an increase, but take out 1.4 million from, from their increase. So I think, again, just appreciative of the, the dialogue and the interaction that we've had, and continue to look forward to that in our upcoming public hearings and further discussions I know will have to take place. So I'll just highlight too, that at this point, the governor's budget, and the amounts associated with that, do not come fully into play with this particular budget. And if there's any other specifics, and I do, I do want to highlight one thing, because we had two, you know, built into this budget amount, we had two public hearings today, one on our breathing apparatuses, and, and the radios. And so, just to understand the, the impact, and I just want to kind of clear this, this out, because I think folks tend to think of debt service increase associated with one item. And I just want to broaden that, and help folks understand that among the things that are, that this roughly $1.1 million in debt service that we're facing this year, has a number of components to it, from, from largest to smallest, the, the high school renovation, the fire vehicles, and the roads, roads improvements that we're looking for, some on the grizzle of the roof, and then some impacts associated with the 2016 refunding, and then ultimately interest that's associated with those principal payments. And want to make sure it's not seen as one singular component associated with that, and wanted to relate it to some of the items that we talked about today, so that as any individuals may want to come to subsequent meetings for the presentation, or to, to talk to us about any further debt that we're taking on, that would give them an opportunity to understand the portions of it and the magnitude. And certainly, specifics on those numbers are available. It's what I was, I asked specifically of Mr. Delaney, our finance chair, so that we would be cognizant of, of those impacts. And that's all I can think of at the moment there, Mayor.
Okay. It's a lot, but we've gone through a lot. Yes, sir?
I appreciate everybody's hard work. I attended all the budget hearings. Our staff, our school board, everybody did a phenomenal job. But this still represents a large tax increase to our homeowners. And I can't support taxing our people anymore, because basically, what I heard over those hearings was, we're driven by unfunded mandates and an absurd system of union benefits at the state level. And I, I can't ask our local people to support that, that unsustainable function. So I'm, I'm sorry, I just can't support this.
Okay. All right, yeah, I mean, we'll take a vote here in one minute. And yeah, everyone's done a great job, the staff, the council, we've all, you know, worked very hard with this. The Board of Ed, I know it's a very, very trying year. We thought last year was trying, this year's worse. And I think as Councilor Evans, our budget chair, said, you know, this doesn't, we don't even know yet. I mean, we're, we're proceeding forward, and we'll explain this ad nauseam to the public. We're proceeding forward with the assumption that we're getting the state reimbursements, and the municipal aid, and the educational cost sharing grants that we have been told we're going to get. But we know, with the governor's proposal, and with the legislature, and now in the legislators' hands, most likely there'll be a reduction somewhere along the way to Berlin and most municipalities. But we, we would have to be a fortune teller to know what that is, because we've met with state representatives, several, and they don't even know. So they can't even really direct us as to what to do. So, you know, unfortunately, there may be some more budget cuts to come from, from the state. But, so I think that, to me, in my opinion, the most prudent way is to move forward with what we know, which is our own town budget. We've, you know, always done a good job with it, even though this year is more difficult. But we still are going forward, and obviously, funding some projects and doing the best we can. So, you know, we'll see what, hopefully we'll see what the people have to say, and we look forward to hearing from them, and look forward to working some more with the Board of Ed. Appreciate the letter. I think that's a great idea, to know what some of the costs will be associated with some of the items mentioned on the letter, so we can have a little bit more intelligent discussion about that. Yes, sir.
I will be voting to push this forward. I want to hear from the voters too. But I want to ask Dave a question. This budget dashboard that we all see, that we all worked with, shows a lot of the things that we considered to keep in the budget or take out. I'm hoping that maybe that can be also on the town website, so that, you know, we can have a honest, open talk, so that, you know, we see this letter from the Board of Ed, what they're proposing to cut. At least the town residents can see what we considered on our side of the, of the town side of the budget, that we took out of the budget, or put back in the budget. I think that would only be fair.
Mayor, Mr. Delaney, could I invite you up for just a second?
You knew you weren't getting off that easy.
Actually, I have two questions, and one of them's Mr. Luddy's. The more time goes on, you, you think a little bit. But is this, well, let me ask the first question, and I'll get to Mr. Luddy's question. From when we sent a number forward on Thursday to come to this council, there was, there was a bit of a change. Could you just explain that numerical change?
Sure. The biggest driver of the change was, we had removed, as of Thursday night, a lease request from the golf course, but that had already been removed. So it was basically administrative oversight. In addition, we went and scrubbed all of the personnel movements, part-time, et cetera, to make sure that those reductions, especially those that were round numbers, 3,000, 17,000, also included benefits and the like. So there were some ups and downs. And then the third one was, during the meeting, you'll recall that Parks and Rec had come forward with some cuts in the basketball program, and we had discussed some games, some practices, and kind of took a swag at what would each be worth. And the Parks and Rec director went back. The savings was a little bit less. We left the games in, took the practices out. Games are a little more expensive, because you have refs and things like that. So we just, we just fine-tuned the pieces. The difference was $18,800, which is almost dollar for dollar, the, the golf lease amount.
Okay, so, so, you know, what we saw on Thursday is eight, roughly $18,000 more. I just wanted to make sure everyone on the council that may not have been there, or even the ones that were there, knew why that, why that number had, had gone up by, by $18,000. And then the second question is, the, the last budget dashboard published, that reflects this number, if you could post that to the, the website. Usually, I think it ends up on the finance page, but if there could be a link in the, I think I see it, it was red flashing or something, it comes up on the...
Breaking news.
Breaking news, okay. So you could put it in breaking news, so that, as Mr. Luddy has requested, that the public might be able to access that directly, and see what we've done over the budget sessions over the last little while.
Absolutely.
Okay. That's all I had.
Okay. Okay, so we have...
Oh, that's, yeah. I should, I should stop while I'm heading.
Go ahead.
Mr. Delaney, also, if you could put a delineation that, that, that highlights the increases associated with the debt, and then just a comparison to last year to this year's budget. I think you may already have that prepared, if you could make that available also.
Sure.
Website.
Dave, that's clear on the dashboard about the, clear on the, you know, the increased payment to our pension fund? Is that, is that clear on this dashboard, or maybe I just don't see it?
There were no, no adjustments to that. It was presented as a seven, Mr. Delaney, make sure I step correctly here.
Yeah, I just want to make...
Roughly $748,000 that we're looking to put into pension, use in pension. It was basically from the last year's budget.
It was from the audit surplus for the fiscal year ended 2016.
Okay.
So we ended last year with fairly decent surplus. Our pension fund is, is pretty low-funded at this point. And so we have historically, over the last several years, made a $700,000 contribution annually. And the budget proposal is to take slightly more than $748,000 from that surplus, and fund what would be the actuarially determined annual required contribution. So essentially, what, what would be required to get us to fully fund it over several years. So in doing that, what we're ultimately doing is contributing what we should contribute annually, without taxing the residents additional money to accomplish that.
Because we have that surplus?
Because we have the surplus, yes.
So that would make, so the contribution is 1.4 million?
Almost 1.5.
Almost 1.5, okay. And obviously, we, we have a shortfall, and we have, how many people in the... And obviously, we have a shortfall, and we have, how many people in the pension?
There are currently 16 remaining. We have one who has already put in paperwork to retire and plans to retire in July. So we will be issuing a check. That person's already elected, lump sum payout. So we'll be issuing a check in August. And we have another individual who has papers and is reviewing. So the funding, the pressing need for the funding is becoming imminent as we get into the new fiscal year.
Okay, that explains that. Okay. We good? All right, so motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries to our public hearing, public meeting. And a motion, second motion for the.
Sure. Move to send the fiscal year 2017, 2018 water control commission budget to the annual public hearing.
You meant the amount?
Do you need the amount?
No, I need the amount. In the amount of $5,862,200.
Okay, second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? The second motion, took a motion on that.
Okay, for the question. Move to approve the following question to be placed on the ballot. Shall the budget recommended by the town council for the 2017, 2018 fiscal year be adopted?
Second on that?
Second.
Any discussion on this question? Yes.
When it is actually on the ballot, is it going to include the amount?
No, that's what it is.
No, I think she said.
This one's, we're not, okay.
We want on this.
Just checking.
Yeah. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so before this third one, do we want to talk about advisory questions?
No. Sure. Do you want to do a motion to discuss, or either way?
Maybe we'll just discuss it, that's fine. So we're thinking, or are you thinking, Dave?
So in our last session of our budget hearings, let's see if you pass copies down. I think Rachel needs one, and maybe Kristen gave one to Peter.
Peter, you got one, right?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So consistent with the charter revision, charter change that took place most recently, I felt that there would be a way we could bridge into that to next year's budget referendum. And it could assist us in this year's budget deliberations. So I have suggested and used the same, very similar wording as is in the charter today, posing that there could be two advisory questions. And I hadn't been a fan of these in the past, but as the referendum and, or as the charter revision passed, and felt that it would be helpful to follow suit with this. And the first one would read, if you voted no on the budget, is the Board of Education budget, and you'd have two choices, too high or too low. The second question would be, if you voted no on the budget, is the town or general government budget too high or too low? And as I step a little bit further, I'd like, I know I put Corporation Counsel to take a look at these. And the only question I have is this sense of use, and I think I used the same way it was written in the charter, but it is indicated town, and I have a parenthetical around or general government. And I believe that is representative, a way to phrase this question. And just if there was anything from Corporation Counsel that you would advise us?
I didn't have a problem with it. The only comment that I had, when I communicated with Jack about it last week, was technically it's, it is one budget. So if you wanted to be technically correct, you would, instead of saying, is the Board of Ed budget or is the town budget too high or too low? You would say, is the proposed appropriation too high or too low? But I had asked the question of whether or not the language that's used in these proposed advisory questions is similar to the language that was used in the past. And Jack responded affirmatively. So I wasn't concerned about voters perhaps being confused and thinking that there's two separate budgets.
When we broke it out that time, did we break it out by Board of Ed and town? Or we just said, is it too high or too low? My concern with this is, people may not know what the Board of Education budget is versus the town budget. So either it has to be clear in the question, so people know that. Because otherwise, or it's as a percentage of the overall budget. But I think somehow it needs to be indicated for people who are going in that may not know that breakdown. My other question is placement of this. If we do put these advisory questions, will they be directly underneath the first question? I don't know what else is on the ballot, assuming this is it, so.
This is how it looked last time we did it.
Yeah. I just want to make sure people don't miss it if they vote no.
No, it will be, but it was combined. David has seen it, I think. That's how it looked last time.
Yeah, okay. So my concern is people just not knowing what the breakdown is.
Yeah.
And how do we get around that?
So part of that was what I talked about earlier, getting out. And that was the ask of Mr. Delaney to break those out and help people understand those amounts.
Yeah, just on the website, you're thinking?
Yeah, initially. I mean, we can certainly, even in the presentation that we do at the public hearing, and even as early as tomorrow, I think we could do that.
Yeah, that one doesn't say, if you voted no on it, which I think caused some of the confusion, because you had some people who voted yes, and then said that it was too high or too low or whatever.
There's always that risk.
Yeah, it was very confusing. So I think this, if you voted no, and then is the appropriation too, that sort of explains it a little bit better. You know, and I know we didn't do this last year, and I had asked that we do it last year. So I am beyond thrilled that we are doing it this year. This is data, I think, that we need to have, and that, you know, it's important that we get from our citizens, so.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Ms. Camp, Nellie. The rationale I took was just that we had some language in the current charter, so that I wouldn't, you know, so showing them something a little different this year, and then again, something different next year, that it would be kind of a precursor to next year. And there's certainly that risk, that if they voted yes, they may correspond. And I actually went through some examples in my head of, you know, if they set a certain number. And hopefully we could, we'll probably see that to some degree. There could be that impact, but maybe, maybe it will be consistent. I, again, I haven't been good at predicting any particular outcome of any election or vote.
There's a charter, David, just so the people can see the questions. I kind of highlighted them for you. We'll set them up for next year.
Yeah, either I could read it or pass it, whichever would be helpful. So for example, and I'll just do a comparison verbally.
And we'll just keep going, Dave.
It says, shall the proposed general government budget for the particular year be adopted? Yes or no? That would be the first question. And then the advisory question for the charter would say, if you voted, if you voted no on the general government budget, is the budget too high or too low? So the equivalent to that, that I came up with, it reads very similarly, is if you voted no on the budget, not differentiating between either, is the town or general government budget too high or too low? It kind of switches the order in which you refer to which budget. The second question of the existing, of the new charter is, shall the proposed Board of Education budget for the particular fiscal year be adopted? Yes or no? And the second advisory question is, if you voted no on the Board of Education budget, is the budget too high or too low? So in this case, I'm saying if you voted no on the budget, is that particular budget, in this case, Board of Education budget, too high or too low? And I could, I'm a visual person, so I'll certainly pass that down, so you can compare the two on that.
Visual too, but I have my copy of them. And I'm well versed in it at this point, so.
I think this is good data, and I think it's worded, the directions are clear. But again, you know, I'm concerned with this and with the charter. Even if it's on the website, people are going to walk in and not know. And that puts them at a, that's a disservice to them. So for next year, I'd like to see the number on it, you know. And I know we can't, because we have to set it in advance. But I just feel like if we're asking them to vote for two budgets, they need to know what those two budgets are. And maybe I'm not giving people enough credit in that they will know. I just want to make sure everybody who votes has a clear understanding of what they're voting for.
I need to look at the charter again, but I think that that was taken care of, because we have to go on a statute, which is a 30-day notice right now. I believe that we're making it, the notice is, it's 15 days prior.
Okay.
So we have a little more leeway next year. My problem this year is notice.
Yeah, okay.
So we have these two questions, so they vote. And let's say they're happy with the town budget, whatever it is. And they're not happy with the school budget after the referendum.
Yeah.
All right, which could be the case, or it could be reversed too, who knows?
Right.
What happens though now, so they're happy with the town budget, because this is the scenario that plays out, so they're not happy with the Board of Ed. And they think it's too low. What are we going to do? Let's say, I mean, you know, typically, it came back to us rejected. We would certainly have the leeway to look at the town budget and perhaps make some more adjustments if we could, and, you know, or, you know, raise the mill rate, whatever we have to do. But is this going to preclude us now? So the referendum comes back and says, okay, we're happy with the town budget as it is. We're not happy with Board of Ed, it's too low. Okay, we gotta, you know, we gotta look and give the Board of Ed some more money to make the voters happy. And are we now precluded from touching the town budget?
In your hypothetical, the budget did not pass?
Okay, the whole thing didn't pass.
That would have to.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Because if it passes, the advisory questions are moot.
Right.
Other than informational.
So the whole thing didn't pass?
If the whole thing doesn't pass, and the voters say that the.
They want more, neither one, I mean, it could be either one.
The Board of Ed budget was too low, it's an advisory question.
None of this is binding.
Do that, do with that what you will.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Right, yeah.
No, that's fine, I mean.
And that's always, you know, in the towns that, I think there's probably around 40 towns now in Connecticut that bifurcate their budgets.
Okay.
And, you know, the magic potion is always, you know, okay, how much do we lower it by?
Right, right, of course.
You know, and they kind of, sometimes, sometimes, you know, like Monroe and Guilford, they do kind of the toe in the water, you know, a couple hundred thousand. And then if it goes down by more, then they get the message. North Haven, for example, you know, we do more drastic cuts.
We only have one other chance at this, though, after the first one. If it comes back and it says no too low, and we say, okay, we'll add 100,000, and then it comes back again and it says no too low, we have no idea what to raise it to.
Yeah, yeah.
And they're non.
Non-binding, yeah, no, I get that, I get that. No, no, right, right, right.
Thinking ahead till next year.
Well, it used to be up until 2011, you couldn't have advisory questions unless you had an ordinance.
Oh, okay.
And then there was a case that involved Nogatuck, where the Board of Education sued the town over advisory questions on a ballot. The legislature acted after the Supreme Court said.
Allowed us to do it.
The Board of Ed was right.
Yeah.
The legislature acted in 2011 to allow by charter ordinance or fiscal authority.
Okay. That is interesting. Okay, so, so we're happy, council, town, corporal council's happy with the language. The language, we're all seem to be happy with those questions. All right. So I don't think we have a motion yet. We didn't, we have, this is all discussion, so let's go ahead and make a motion on this.
Move to approve the advisory questions as written, as in front of us.
Okay, second on that?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, final motion.
Last one here, and this one. Move to allow any person who is a citizen of the United States of the age of 18 years or more, who jointly or severally is liable to the town for taxes assessed against him or her on an assessment of not less than $1,000 on the last completed grand list of the town, to vote in the budget referendum on April 25, 2017.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay, great discussion. Moving on.
Okay, item, item number eight. The town has rents uniforms for several departments of its employees. In the past, they have rented them from UniFirst, Uniform Services, which, who had partnered with Connecticut Community Nonprofit Alliance. After looking at that, we thought maybe it was, kind of, an attempt to follow the council's directive to start to bid goods and services out. Purchasing department went out and secured bids from three different companies, Amorak Uniform Services, Maggotsun Clothing of Newington, and White Way Laundry of Wallingford. After reviewing those, the committee who was looking at this decided to terminate the RFP without awarding the contract, because they were concerned over the quality and the cost related to transition of those uniforms.
Question?
The purchasing agent at the time, Alan Tulley, Alan, excuse me, Adam Tulley, then went back to UniFirst, who was ending their current, their contract through the DAS CCNA arrangement, and we're not going up, and only UniFirst first, if they were going up only, they were going up as themselves. They were able to secure a price through, following the pricing guidelines of the National Joint Powers Alliance, NJPA, a cooperative contract. After analyzing this, the expected annual cost of $17,373 for the same inventory was total, which would have previously been $20,058. So therefore, this represents a $13,430 potential savings over a five-year contract. Well, it's a small, I asked Adam to bring this forward. It shows that we're trying, we're looking to try to find savings where we can. And we did, we went through the bidding process, and, I mean, Adam put a lot of work into this. So we're bringing it forward to you for your approval.
Great. Great.
Move to authorize the town manager to enter into a five-year agreement with UniFirst Corporation of Indian Orchard, Mass. For the rental and servicing of uniforms, mats, and rags, utilizing the pricing guaranteed under the National Joint Powers Alliance Cooperative Contract 062415 UFC.
Second on that?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Town manager's report. The first one is unfortunate. I just mentioned Adam Tulley, and Adam has resigned and is moving on. He has a very good opportunity in another town. He's a young guy, this is a good opportunity for him. So we're going to wish him well, and his last day is this Friday. We are, Kevin is reworking the job description, and we are going to go out to fill the position. It's a very necessary one, particularly in Atlanta. You know, we're looking to bid more of this work, we're looking to save money. I think this is a good example. So we're looking to fill that position again in the near future.
Can I ask a question, since we are talking about hiring? Any news on Tax Collector?
Right now, we've been, we've got, we interviewed two people.
Okay.
Excuse me, we interviewed more than two people, we interviewed four people. We narrowed it down to two people, and right now, that's where it stands. We're going to go out, we're going to re-interview those two people. And we are working on, and Kevin's looking at reworking, let me back up a moment. We're all, taking a little bit of time, because we're also looking at reworking the job description and the requirements in those areas.
Okay.
So it's clear. Couple other things, I did want to bring you up to date on. I know this one's not very exciting, but it's, we need to know. We have a big pump station, sewer pump station on the Burrowland Turnpike. It's getting exciting. We, two of the three pumps are not operating right now. So we are looking, the problem is, I'll get too detailed. The two pumps, the pumps have isolation valves, the isolation valves are not working. So we can't isolate the pumps to remove them from the, from the pit. Now, if you remember, we had gone out to bid to get an emergency service. The drain doctor is the only one to bid on it, so they are going to work with us. We're coming up right now with a protocol, and we're going to run a simulation of that later in the week and how we may do this. If it works, then we're going to actually put, implement it either next weekend or some night, sometime probably at night, because the flows go down. And we're, it's not an easy thing to do, because these pumps are 40 feet below the ground. And we have to get down in there and, you know, I don't, the workers do. The burgers do.
By we, you mean them.
Yeah, you got it. I'll be there watching.
Is that the Taco Bell?
No.
No?
That's, that's, that's a water, that's a water pressure station. No, this is down, you come out of, you come out onto Burrow and Turnpike, take a right, it's right down below, you can see it down.
Just past CVS or-
Yeah.
Where the new Accu is going over there somewhere.
I thought you should know about that. It's probably going to be a relatively costly project, but we need to get it done. A little bit of an update on the Kensington Dam, I did have one resident come in, excuse me, call me and discuss that in favor of leaving the dam there. He, it was good, it was a good conversation. I was not aware, I have never seen anybody out there kayaking or anything. He says, yes, there are people in the summertime, on weekends kayaking and fishing, so. He said the fishing's not very good, but he, he, he gave us some information. We did, Kevin and I were in Hartford, we did find out there are some grants available through bonding through the state that, so maybe look at some money for that. I was with Senator Miner today, he said that, he had mentioned there was some money available. I talked to our Christian at the state DEP today. He said the fisheries has actually taken a look at this and that fisheries is concerned that they've, they've had fish ladders leading up to this point and that's acting as a block right now. So they may require us to put a fish ladder if we leave the dam in place. It doesn't sound like a big thing. I'm actually meeting the guy, the representative of the fish, fisheries on Thursday morning. He and I are going to walk the two, the five pipes underneath the Kensington Road and then walk our way up to look at this and see what we need to do. So we're working on that. The tennis courts are obviously waiting for the weather. We were supposed to paint the lines last week at Kansas.
Didn't work out.
Yeah, it just didn't work out. For some reason, the white lines didn't show.
Yeah.
The Worthington Meeting House project, we met with five architects last Friday, we interviewed them, we've down selected two, and the committee's going to meet this Friday with those two and then down select the one to start doing the design. Snowstorm, we did have a snowstorm last week. And, you know, as a whole, I think, I think the crews and everybody in town did a great job.
Great job.
And I, and I've told them, I've sent them out a note. And the other part of that is, I sent them out a note saying that they did a great job and they did it safely. I mean, I'm sure you've seen in the news where a couple people were killed in the storm. One of them was a DPW worker in Massachusetts. So I thanked all our employees for doing it safely. Nobody was hurt, everybody did their job, equipment held up, you know, and, and to credit Jim Simon, his crew, Doug, Brian Griswold, everybody, in our faults, they all did a very good job. With that being said, we do, after every storm, we get some, we get some calls about different things, mailboxes, snow on the sidewalks. I've actually gone out and talked to several residents. And so what I thought is an effort to try to improve our performance and try to reduce any calls we get. Right now, we're doing, we're putting together a spreadsheet, analyzing the calls we've got, see where, what, what issues we have. And if we have, you know, proponents of, of, of something, then maybe we can address that, see amongst our group, to see whether or not we can, we can improve so we don't, we don't do those things. In the past, something we can do to change that, you know? There's a couple things that come up, like for some reason cul-de-sac seem to be a problem. Sidewalks are really a problem, you know, people shovel and then we push the snow back down.
We appreciate, we do appreciate that. We know there's no way around it.
Yeah, but no, we feel that, you know, a way we should look at trying to improve our performance, so we're going to take it, do an analysis and take a look at that. And the last thing, the railroad station, we, there was a meeting with ConDAT, we also had a telephone call with Amtrak. ConDAT had presented us with a, a report that showed that they had a, they were going to expand, they were going to fix the loading platform, they were going to change the loading platform, now the building was gone, expand it. They were also putting a parking lot where, in the area where the train station was located. We voiced an opposition, we weren't, we weren't enthralled with that idea, so we, we talked to them. There was later a call from Amtrak, the mayor had sent a, a letter to Amtrak asking them to contact us earlier. They called us, we had another call with ConDAT and Amtrak. There seems to be a little more flexibility with the Amtrak and some time because right now, the site's not released. Nobody can do anything because the site's not released, there's still insurance companies and fire investigators are all still doing their job. So right now, the site's not released, the bricks aren't going to be available to us, you know, when, when they do. There are three articles that we've asked for, I haven't got assurance yet that we'll get those. But we are going to, I have a letter that, that actually Jim Mahoney has prepared and we're going to send that to ConDAT, expressing our concerns and, and offering to work collaboratively with them to come to a, and I, I actually, in the, in the conversation with ConDAT, I mentioned that, you know, it's important that we keep the town's historic, you know, the people in the historic district and the people in the historic society, they're concerned about losing the history. And I've, we've discussed that with, with ConDAT and with Amtrak, saying, you know, before you expand the dock, before you do anything, let's take a look at this from a historic perspective and see what we can do to protect, you know, what's there and if we can replicate it or do something to, to come back and, and put something back there that represents what the past was. So, that's pretty much my, my report.
Okay, thanks, Jack. Special committee reports, what do we have? Do we have?
We had our-
I guess the Budget Committee, Matt. We can go through that whole thing again, no, no, you sure you guys don't want to go through all the-
I think we've already had our Budget Committee report. I think we're good.
Okay, good, I'm glad.
Good.
What else, anything else?
Do we, you want to talk about meeting with the selection commission?
Yeah, yeah, well, yes, we can, yeah, we can do it now, or Council Communications, whatever, we can do it now, whatever. Yeah, so we need, we need to just notice a meeting, we can try and do tonight, but we, we're going to be consistent with that and notice, even though we don't necessarily need to, so what do we, what's going on next week? What do we have next week?
That's Wednesday is the-
What's next Wednesday?
Wednesday is the 28th, right? No, Tuesday, that's Tuesday.
Tuesday, right, is the 28th.
It's a political.
Yeah, so, you want to just do it after that at some point, or?
That usually goes to like nine.
No, I don't mean that. Another day, no, another day, no, 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 we don't want it after that meeting.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think Wednesday or Thursday after that.
Okay, you want to do, it's Tuesday, you said it's 28th, right? Thursday? Let's have a day off and maybe do it Thursday, is that okay?
That's fine.
Uh, you want to do, can we do 6:30?
Yeah.
Whenever we do 6:30 on the, so that's what-
I'm not available that day.
You're not? Uh, you want to do Wednesday, we can do Wednesday, whatever, get it over on Wednesday, whatever. Two days in a row, then we're off, right? So-
Just put a sharp stick in your eye.
Yeah. So how about, so the 29th, was that work? Then we'll just, we all good on the 29th?
Yeah.
At 6:30, what, just in caucus room A, maybe? Or, you want to just do it down there?
August needs to put together an agenda for you and to email it out.
Yeah.
And then you can determine, we need to see if the room's available.
Okay, if not, we'll pick wherever, whatever's available. All right, so that'll, that'll take care of that. And then we have a meeting tomorrow night, obviously just another extra budget hearing if people want to come in and express their concerns. Happy to see them. I wanted to ask, I don't, we have a meeting on and, and it's a favor if you guys can do it, if you can't, whatever, I'll try and do what I can do. What is April 6th? Is that just a work session?
That's to set the budget, right?
Is that the night we're setting the budget?
That's to vote on the budget.
Is that the night we're setting the budget?
That's to vote on the final number, I think.
That's the final day? Is that the final day? I thought we had another-
Or maybe that's worse.
I didn't think that was the final day. I have the calendar, but I don't have it with me, I was looking at it today.
6th?
Yeah.
Thursday?
Yeah, but it says, it's not really clear what that day is. I don't, I don't have the calendar with me. I, I would ask if we could move it to the 5th or if that's possible, but if, I didn't think that was the, well, maybe it is the night we set the budget, I don't know. Is it?
No, because we usually do that at the council meeting.
Oh.
No, I don't know, I don't know, no, I don't know.
The, what's that?
The town council meetings on the 4th.
Yeah, Tuesday's the council meeting, right?
Hmm.
So we have, what, what is the, what is the, so what is the 6th? Can you, Mr. Delaney, can you shed some light on all of us, councillors up here trying to figure?
The way the calendar's set up now, the 5th was a work session if needed.
Okay.
So I think it was more, what came out of the meeting on the 28th? Do you feel you need the time to, to talk through?
Oh.
Variety of topics, and then the 6th was designed for the vote. That's how the calendar is set up. So if you wanted to take the 5th instead of a work session or at the end of a work session, you could-
All right.
Vote and, you know, not have the 6th.
Okay.
Kate would know, but I think if you do it a day earlier, that's not a problem.
Is that a problem?
Not a problem, it just has to be noticed and then it reconsidered a special meeting.
On the 5th, if we did it on the 5th? As a work session and ultimately we would probably vote at the end of the meeting?
Yeah.